Let's call the meeting to order. So first up is the roll call.
Archana Olliar.
Here.
Lisa Ramon.
Here.
John Masden.
Here.
Diana Niederman.
Eric Garan.
Here. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Legions?
Hi. Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any need for an executive session? We'll move on to the call to the public. Do we have a call to the public?
No, we do not.
Spotlights and recognitions. Carol Nowakowski contacted me. She said she wasn't going to be able to be here today, but she did want me to pass on that she would ask people to contact legislatures, your legislators, to pass a budget with your public education in mind. Next up is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve our consent agenda.
I'll second that.
John Masden.
Yes.
Archana Olliar.
Yes.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Eric Garan.
Yes. Next up, we have our student achievement, expanded technology and implementation at LHHS, a discussion item.
So, Mr. President, members of the board, tonight, as you can see, it's only myself and Mr. Murray, so regardless of what the item says, one of us will be presenting the items. We have directors who are on vacation, and we appreciate that they take that time for themselves. We have been having some stakeholder meetings for expanded technology at the high school. There have been a variety of discussions. I'm trying to figure out how to work this. We had both committee and focus group meetings. The following stakeholders were involved. Mr. Masden and Dr. Aron were part of the committee meeting. We had six district staff members, eight LHHS parents across all of our grade levels, 15 LHHS staff members were across all departments and grades, and we have talked with 36 students across all grades as well. We shared the vision, and it was really to increase, enhance the use of technology as a tool to improve engagement, elevate rigor, and transform instructional practices in the classroom and at home. And the purpose of technology has dramatically shifted over time, and it's towards a fully integrated and seamless presence. For our students, technology is really the equalizer that provides access to information, the ability to collaborate, create, and connect with people throughout the world. Technology also creates the opportunity for differentiation and personalization of So when we talked about why with the committee and with these focus groups that we worked with, it's an essential component to improve our student achievement, and it really transforms what the classroom is and what we can do in the classroom. And it's important for everybody to understand that technology is a tool. It isn't supposed to replace the teacher. It doesn't take over the curriculum that we provide to our students, but it is a tool that enhances that teaching and learning. It prepares students for their future, not necessarily ours. They're preparing for jobs that aren't necessarily even happening right now, and computers are important in that process. It empowers students to take ownership of their own learning. It engages students in creating content, collaborating with others, and making connections. It removes constraints of the traditional classroom in schools, which is time, location, and audience. It provides meaningful and authentic learning experiences for students and teachers, and facilitates homeschool communication connections. It really helps in that home piece, in that with the new textbook adoption that the board approved, there are a lot of things in there that parents can access, videos that they can look at if they want to see how a lesson was taught. All of that is right there for them at their fingertips. We talk about teaching and learning. The heart of this expanded technology plan is teaching and learning, and these are all the areas where that can be used as a tool to improve and enhance the instruction when we look at our science simulations, our social studies adoption coming up, all of our assessment interventions, our CTE classes. These are specifically the two adoptions that happened at the high school, the HMH English and the Math Big Ideas. We explored a variety of options, just carts that are in every classroom. That does not provide an opportunity for kids to have that necessarily at home. Carts with a sign-out, so there would be a process for kids who didn't have that availability at home, they could sign out possibly, or one-to-one devices for all of our students at the high school level. When we asked all of those groups, overwhelmingly, the support was to try and move towards a one-to-one model. What we heard from staff, here are some of the things that we heard. Teachers would then have the opportunity to have the same expectations for all students because, right now, we know that some students have access to technology at home and some do not. They feel it kind of brings us into the present, as many school districts have already moved to a one-to-one. We've talked with several systems that are 10 or more years into the process, which is great information. They've kind of worked out all the kinks in that process. Students become accountable for their device rather than one that they just take in and out of a cart all day. From the student perspective, students felt that it feels more professional as learners to be working on a laptop, very different from just working on your phone. It would help them to organize their materials in all their classrooms, all the courses they're taking. Fewer distractions. It was awesome that the kids came up with this. They said, "When I work on my phone, I have all my apps, so everything is pinging up on my phone all the time and kind of getting in the way of my work." Some students shared that they have never written an essay on a computer. They've only had their phone. I was in awe of that. I'm sure kids, we know that kids are very adaptive, and they learn to do those things, but pretty amazing that they've been able to go through their full educational career at this point using their phone, and they were really excited about the possibility of having a one-to-one device, and felt that it would be better use of their time when there are substitutes because their information is there and available for them and ready to go. From families, again, preparing the students for the real world, fewer distractions, since the devices would have filtering software, that it would be equitable for all LHUSD students, not just those without home technology, that students need to be proficient on a computer when they go into the workforce, not necessarily a phone, and that families would really like training and support that would go with having that one-to-one device. So as we took all that information into consideration, math and English have digital learning platforms as part of their adopted program, and the Read 180 and Math 180 intervention platforms that were adopted, they also are digital, and it would be very beneficial for students. So kind of where are we in the funding process? So 270 devices were purchased with emergency connectivity grant funds, and those will be distributed to the high school at the start of the year. So that supports nine classrooms to start, but we have 30 math and ELA teachers and classrooms. So we have applied for ESAR funding to purchase 600 additional devices. These devices would be deployed throughout the ELA and math departments to start the year. If it's approved through the grant process, that will come back before the board for final approval. Technology would be available at that meeting to talk through, okay, what is the device that we're looking at? It is a device that would last a five-year cycle. And with the 600 and the 270, what we would be outfitting really are carts in those math and English classrooms. So how do we move further than that and look towards one-to-one? We also applied for emergency connectivity funds. They had a second round of availability to purchase a laptop for every student and teacher at LHHS. We have no idea if that will be approved or not, and we won't know that until probably August, maybe a little bit later. If that becomes a reality and it is approved, again, we would come back to the board for final approval with an actual implementation plan that includes training for teachers, working with families. How would all of that move forward? But this was really just a time to share with you kind of where we stand in gathering that data and what we've done so far to make sure that our kids at the start of the year have an integrated experience with the textbooks and materials that we have already adopted. And that's where we stand today.
I do have a clarifying question. So it sounds like a two-step process. The first step would be, we were expecting to hear from ESAR first, and then we would know if we have the 270 plus those 600 laptops.
We have the 270.
We have the 270.
We're waiting to see about the 600.
We have the 600. And then the next step after that is the ECF. But we've already applied for the ECF. We're just expecting them to lag a little bit behind ESAR.
Yes. It's a much deeper process because we already have that approved, and now it's just saying, hey, here are the devices we'd like. Can that be approved? And that's a pretty quick process. Emergency connectivity fund is through the state, so as each person applied, then they had a closing date, and then it will take them several months to go through that whole process for everyone.
Okay.
And they may come back with, they will fund it all, they will only fund some, and then that's when we'll have to come back with next steps and talk through that with the board.
Okay. I know this is maybe putting the cart before the horse a little bit, but you know, the other piece of this would be broadband access. Have we given any thought to that piece of it, or is that, we're just anticipating that that would be up to families to supply?
Currently, it would be up to families. They do have some programs in the community that provide for education broadband that's much cheaper, and we do provide that to all of our families so they know that it's available.
Well, just as a general statement, I mean, I know we're all sick of hearing about the pandemic, but the pandemic did show us how much the digital divide exists, how prominent it is, and how much it requires solutions. And so even though we are all hoping that school never closes again for any reason, this would give us a way to prepare and have better things in place if we did have any sort of emergency thing happen in the future.
Any other discussion on the discussion item? I just want to say too, I'm looking forward to this being an action item coming up. Anything that we can do to accelerate that comes up to get it to one-to-one, I think there's overwhelming support for that with all the logistics that it entails. So I'd encourage us to keep being creative and, once again, looking forward to that being an action item.
Okay.
All right, we will move on to action items. Human Resources, Contracted Services Through Educational Services Incorporated for Subsource Program.
Mr. President, members of the board, Lake Havasu Unified School District is recommending the continuation of contracted services with ESI. ESI continues to recruit and onboard substitutes and partner with LHUSD to find innovative ways to fill short and long-term openings. They have provided training and onboarding services that are determined by LHUSD to align with our goals. ESI currently provides 98 substitutes for our district, 67 being certified and 31 classified. This number has increased by more than 40 employees in the past year. Our substitutes will continue to work with our subcoordinator and use Frontline to accept jobs. Our teachers and administrators will continue to be able to request specific substitutes through Frontline, work with our subcoordinator, and provide feedback. Employers must permit employees to accrue and use up to 40 hours of paid sick time per year. ESI will continue to track this benefit and pay for all eligible sick time without impact to the availability of substitutes for the district. Had LHUSD employed long-term substitutes during the '22 school year, our cost for healthcare benefits and accrued leave would have been approximately $125,000 for the year. Cost to the district has remained the same. All peer reliabilities and ESI administrative fees have now been bundled into one rate for ease of processing and to meet industry standards for staffing companies. ESI is currently on the MESC contract, and this contract has been reviewed by purchasing and approved as to form by legal counsel.
I move that we adopt 6.1 as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Not really, but I do want to highlight one thing. So there's a big number in here. It's that we have 40 new substitutes just in this past year, and I do want to say thank you to our community because I know that that's the result of a lot of effort through different groups to just encourage people to sign up to be a substitute. So thank you very much. You definitely came through for us when we needed you.
Also, just with this, just to give you a chance to talk about, this is a company we're renewing with. How has our relationship been with them through this last kind of contract setting?
We've been with them for a number of years now, and it really has created, kind of lightened a little bit of a burden that's been on HR for some time, especially now with the new laws. It's fairly new, it's not brand new, but there's laws now pertaining, as mentioned in the action item, that you have to track hourly leave now. And just the staffing that we have, it would create just undue hardships on the department. We'd have to employ more people just to actually accommodate that change in law. But they've been a great company to work with.
Archana Olliar.
Yes.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
John Masden.
Yes.
Eric Garan.
Yes. Moving on to 6.2, Student Services, Purchase of Contracted Occupational Therapy Services.
Mr. President, members of the board, Lake Havasu Unified School District has taken action to recruit qualified therapy-related services staff, but has had difficulty filling these openings. Comp-Health Medical Staffing is an improved vendor as part of the SAFE contract. We are requesting approval of the purchase of contracted occupational therapy through a virtual platform, not to exceed $115,000 for the '22-'23 school year, with comp-Health medical staffing at a rate not to exceed $72 an hour. Lake Havasu Unified School District is obligated to ensure the provision of services for eligible students to receive a free and appropriate public education for students requiring related services as required under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Funds from the MNO budget will be used to pay for services, and this has been reviewed by purchasing and legal.
Motion or discussion?
I move that we approve 6.2 as presented.
I second.
Just one thing, just to make sure everybody knows, just for public interest, that $72 an hour figure, sometimes people don't have a context for it. Can you give us a context for how competitive a price that is?
So when we look at different companies and what they charge for a school setting, $72 an hour is very comparable. If this were happening out in the community setting, that rate is much higher. Occupational therapists are highly sought after. They do an amazing job, and the hourly rate is usually much higher.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
John Masden.
Yes.
Archana Olliar.
Yes.
Eric Garan.
Yes. Next up, 6.4, Business Services. Whoops, I missed one. 6.3, Student Services, Memorandum of Understanding Between Havasu Community Health Foundation and Lake Havasu Unified School District for After-School Student Assistance Program, SAP, for the 2022-2023 school year.
Mr. President, members of the board, this memorandum of understanding establishes a formal commitment between the parties to support collaborative work in better addressing the behavioral and social needs of our at-risk students through the Student Assistance Program in all of our elementary schools, with the intent of providing services in the middle and/or high schools if opportunity and time permit. Havasu Community Health Foundation agrees to administer and provide the Student Assistance Program to support elementary school students, and LHUSD agrees to provide facilities as in-kind. Parent consent is required to participate in any of the programs. This program has been previously approved and offered during the school week for the '21-'22 school year. The agreement has been reviewed by our legal counsel and is attached for your approval.
Motion or discussion?
I move that we adopt 6.3 as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I just think it's another great community partnership that, you know, is no cost.
Yes.
You know, just with facilities and provides opportunities for our students. Another good win-win.
It is a great program for kids, and we appreciate their support in doing that.
John Masden.
Yes.
Archana Olliar.
Yes.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Eric Garan.
Yes. Now, 6.4, Business Services, Fiscal Year '23 Proposed Budget.
Mr. President, members of the board, Arizona Revised Statute 15-905 requires each district to annually prepare a proposed budget no later than July 5th and furnish it to the Arizona Department of Education. After approval by the governing board, the proposed budget summaries and notice of public hearing will be published on the ADE website, and the meeting to adopt the budget is scheduled for July 5th, 2022. I do have a presentation for you as well. So you'll notice that on the screen, I added a word to it, so it's not just the proposed budget, it's the proposed preliminary budget of 2022-2023. The reason behind that is I will come back before you sometime before September 15th and actually revise this budget because, right now, the state has not formally adopted a budget. So this process will happen twice. Hopefully, the next time I come before you to revise, you'll see much of the same slides. The only difference will be the dollar amounts that are attached to it. So for the purpose, again, per the action item, I referenced Arizona Revised Statute 15-905, requiring districts to adopt a budget. During the presentation for the preliminary budget, we'll review briefly budget forms, any reports that are used to put the budget together, average daily membership calculations, budget expenditures, and of course, at the end, questions, and then a reference to where the public can view this preliminary proposed budget and any other budgets, past or present, on the district website. So this is a snapshot as the Auditor General's Office changed the budget forms a couple of years ago now, and part of the calculation process, this is just a snippet of a couple of the tabs in an Excel spreadsheet document that actually feed the budget forms that go to the state and are viewable by the public. This page is very, very long. I had to shrink it down and collapse it down so you can get an idea as to all the required fields, and these are just some of them in building the budget. On the next slide, just a couple screenshot snippets of some of the reports used, gathered from ADE to allow us to put figures together and reconcile with ADE in putting together the budget, very similar to when I was before you in May, when we revised the budget each year. And we'll do the same again, as I mentioned, in September. So the section of average daily membership, we'll look at prior year average daily membership and current year projections, now that we are in the current year funding model. Number of years ago, the state went to a current year funding model, so now that not only do we look at what has been given in the past by actual figures from 100-day numbers from the year before, we now have to forecast what our 100th-day number will be at this moment, what that'll look like in January. So that's kind of a long way out in trying to determine where our average daily membership or our student enrollment will be, all the way out to January. And then funding fluctuates up and down all throughout the year based on that projection. So in determining average daily membership, one of the reports used up there in the top-left corner, there are a few of them actually that look similar, but they're SPED and ADM and ELL 20 reports, taking the data from the Department of Ed and then populating it into the center of your screen where you see the red arrows pointing down to FY22, 100th-day ADM. Those are actual figures. And at this point in the year, they're actually not finalized figures. The state is continually doing recalculations all the way up through July, that these numbers could still fluctuate from January. So while these numbers are pretty accurate, they can slightly move up or down depending on statewide calculations, recalculations. The calculations continuing, again, these are snippets of the actual budget forms and then the data sheets that are actually behind the scenes of the budget forms. So in calculating the budget, you see there in the top center of your screen on one of the data forms, this is what the state allocates in the base level amount in statute, and this is what they adopt every year. So this number that you see on the screen and what is populating the budget form in the preliminary budget is the $4,390.65, which happens to be the exact same number that we used for the fiscal year '22 budget. Once the state, as I mentioned, finalizes, and when I come back to you again, as I mentioned in September, we hope that that number increases. And everything that we're hearing now indicates that that will increase. By statute, it'll have to increase by at least 2% for the inflation, but we are hearing that it may increase even more than that based on what is happening at the state level at this time. If you follow that red arrow downward, you can see that that amount increases a little bit, by 1.25%. That is what's called the Teacher Comp Index. It goes up by 1.25%, and what that is, is it's basically if the district has an accepted and adopted evaluation instrument and tool that the district uses to evaluate teachers and staff, that they get an increase of 1.25%. I don't know of any district in the state that does not get that because evaluation is mandatory, but that's how it was designed many, many years ago. At the very bottom of the screen, it's a snippet of what's called TEI, Teacher Experience Index. So we use this number in the budget calculations. You can see that it's compared our district's teachers' years of experience, the average number compares to the average number of the years of experience at the state level across the state, and then the difference between the two, it's the multiplying factor, determines what our actual Teacher Experience Index is compared to the state. So you can see we are a little bit lower from the state average, which gives us a TEI calculation of .97. So because that is below your 1.0 multiplier, we still get to multiply at 1.0. We don't take a loss because our Experience Index is lower than 1.0, which is a good thing, because if we did have to multiply that out, we would actually see a reduction, a slight reduction in funding. But anything below a 1.0 is just a standard 1.0 multiplier. Now, if our Teacher Experience Index was higher than the state average, then it would be like a 1-point-whatever figure, then we get the benefit of increased funding based on that multiplier. So in calculations, reports have changed a little bit this year. The state went to, instead of, it used to be called an APOR 55-1, it's now BSA 55-1. And I appreciate the state trying to make things a little bit more streamlined, not having so many reports, so I think they're actually trying to do the right thing by improving their reporting. I appreciate that. So this is the new look of what used to be the APOR 55-1, and it's now the BSA 55-1. So you can see at the top-left corner there on the presentation, in the green rectangle, these are the numbers that are projections as to what our ADM will be next year. We project because we look at trends over time. I project fairly flat enrollment because that's what we've seen over time, over many, many years. There was a period where we had a drastic decrease with the opening of charter schools and the economy at one point. We did see that even with COVID. We saw a dramatic decrease in enrollment for a short period of time. Many of those students went to online platforms, or they stayed within the district, but reporting at that particular time showed a decrease. We are back to just about pre-pandemic levels, actually a little bit, almost right there with pre-pandemic levels before the pandemic with student enrollment, which is a good thing, because we have recovered those students. a good thing as we have recovered those students and they're back with LHUSD. So these, these projections are then looked at and imported into the budget worksheet to then be multiplied against the base support level, which gives us, which you'll see here in just a second, the actual, this has several, so this is the group B, the group B weighted counts for our special services that we provide for those students who qualify for special services, and they are multiplied out and given a weighted factor. And you can see the two ovals there, you add the two weighted factors together of group A and group B, and that gives your overall weighted student count that we multiply against the base support level given by the state. So continuing in calculations, you can see there that taking the weighted student count, multiplying it by the base support with teacher compensation, times TEI of one point oh, so we don't lose anything, you can see that the adjusted base level is just over thirty-one million. Going to district additional assistance, you can see historical data there. You can see going across the top of the page for preschool K eight and nine through twelve students, you take the student count, you times it by the DAA or District Additional Assistance Funding Formula or Funding Number, and then that gives you your district additional assistance per category, preschool, K eight, and nine through twelve. Go back to that. So you can see the historical data on the bottom left from fiscal year eighteen to twenty-two. You can see the increase in district additional assistance over time back in eighteen and before that, the state at that point had an eighty-five percent adjustment, they called it budget adjustment, to DAA. So they actually adjusted the DAA assistance downward or cut it by eighty-five percent. So we would have qualified for just over two million dollars around that time in district additional assistance, and we were receiving just over three hundred thousand to run our whole district operations when it comes to capital funding. That's maintaining buildings and buying buses and equipment, air conditioning units, all for three hundred thousand dollars to run over a million square feet of building space, not a whole lot. Thankfully, coming into nineteen, they started to lift the adjustment and starting to reduce that. And then in fiscal year twenty, actually, this fiscal year twenty-two, we were at full, full restoration of DAA. Going into next year, it's proposed to be the same. So we would qualify for just over two point four million dollars in district additional assistance for next year. In more calculations, as we have an override that's currently in place, this is going, we're going into year six of the override. One through, years one through five are fully funded at a hundred percent. When you go into year six, you receive a one-third reduction in funding. Year seven, you receive two-thirds reduction in funding, and then year eight, you have an override that's no longer in place. So this year in year six, we're going to be facing a one-third reduction, and that's based on average daily membership, weighted student count, and the current funding formula that will be in place. I predict this will go up some as far as dollars received, because if the base support level increases, that will impact the bottom line here. But right now, currently, we're about one point, or three point one million dollars in override funding. Last year, or this year, I should say, we were around four point five million fully funded for the override. So now where does all of that start to come together? On page seven and page eight of the budget forms that go to the state and are viewable to the public, you can see where all of this comes together in a little bit more of a, of a manageable way to look at it and make sense of it. So you can see up there at the top, we will receive our revenue control limit is about thirty-two point two million based on last, this year's funding. Again, depending on what happens at the state level in September, I'm hoping that number goes up. But we're at thirty-two point two million. You can see to the right, we have two point four million, almost two point five million anticipated in district additional assistance based on the slide, a couple slides ago, showing the calculation for that. You can see going down the middle column or column A, there is the three point one million dollar number, that's for the override that's in place with the one-third reduction. Continuing on down, we have approximately a nine point eight million dollar carry forward going from this year going into next year. And we have talked about how that is hopefully going to increase here over the next, this next year, because we are taking the old EBT funds that were remaining in the old EBT account, and we are offsetting the cost of expenditures to our current medical premiums, and that will, that will lower our expenses, which will inflate our carry forward, allowing us to have more budget capacity in the years moving forward until we end up spending that down. Carry forward is like a savings account. It's not renewed funding year after year after year, meaning if you spend it, it comes back. It's just as you spend it, like a savings account, it starts to go away. So we, we budget effectively for that. We're looking short term and long term to address that over time so that we gradually spend that down in a responsible way. You can see just below that is the estimated amount for prop one, two, three funding at about three hundred and forty-eight thousand, leaving us an overall general budget limit in maintenance and operations of forty-five million, forty-five point six million dollars based on this current year funding with the base support level being the same in fiscal year twenty-two as it is budgeted in the preliminary budget in fiscal year twenty-three. On the next slide, this is page one of the budget sheet that goes before the state and before those who would like to, to view it. This, this sheet basically is the maintenance and operations fund, Fund oh oh one, and dividing it up into the columns that are specific to salaries, to benefits, purchase services, supplies, as you see the columns going across the page at the top. And, and then going downward, you see the overall total, total budgeted lines at the very bottom of that sheet, which over in the far right corner of the sheet in the red oval, the forty-five point six million, that reconciles out to the page I just showed you, that we have that budget capacity from the, the state to spend that amount. If we don't spend that amount, that generates the carry forward that goes into the next year. And at the bottom of the presentation, you can see, I, I keep this here each year for examples, not just for us, but mainly for those who are in the public so they can understand, they can get, have a little bit of, of an example of what is a sixty-one hundred expense? And you can see it's salaries, stipends, et cetera. Sixty-two hundred, or medical insurance and benefits, payroll taxes, those types of things. So that way, it's, at least it's there and visible to those who, who may want to know a little bit more in depth as to what each of those figures represent. The next slide is page eight of the budget sheet. This is the calculation for unrestricted capital. This is where the district additional assistance, how we currently have it, the, the district currently takes all district additional assistance, and we push it over into capital because we do have the flexibility of moving it either into MNO or into capital. Right now, because for so many years, we were capital starved, we were pushing the entire amount over into six-ten or capital and using that district additional assistance to support capital needs within the district. So you can see there at the very top, we, we started at six, six, just over six million dollars. We are anticipating around a million dollars in expenses. This number will finalize as we submit our annual financial report in October, leaving us with about five point one million. You can see the additional two point four million as we saw on the previous slides, giving us a new total or budget capacity of around seven point six million dollars in capital. This next slide, also, again, this, this sheet is, I believe it's page four in the budget forms. This shows how we've allocated the seven point six million into the differing categories for construction, library books, property, vehicles. You can see how, where that seven point six is kind of allocated out. And this is just an overall budget. The budget, we're able to be flexible with that. So if there is a need that arises in some other area, we, we really have to just make sure we don't overexpend the seven point six million dollars. Going into the next slide, this is budgeted expenditures for classroom site funds, Fund zero one zero. In years past, it used to be Fund eleven, ten, or Fund eleven, twelve, and thirteen for three oh one monies. This year, fiscal year twenty-two, they condensed it down to one fund, which is actually kind of nice. It's just Fund zero one zero or Fund ten. So all of classroom site funds are pooled into this one fund and then expended out of that fund. So you can see that based on the calculation there on the left-hand side of the screen in the red oval, we're anticipating about four point five million in budgeted funds for three oh one monies next year. Again, this is based on a number of factors. Statewide student enrollment is also one of those factors. So right now, we're budgeting for about four point five million in expected expenditures to be paid out to our teachers or staff who qualify for three oh one funds. These remaining slides are just quick summaries of, of many of the other funds that we have on our, in our general ledger at the district and districts throughout the state. You can see the budgeted fiscal year column is basically the, the amount we have in cash in each of those funds. Doesn't mean that we're going to spend all of it, but that's our budget capacity where we have, have the room to spend up to that amount in each of those budgeted funds. The columns on the left, you can see that those are more of our federal funds when we're talking about Title I and funds for special education, also various other federal and state grants. And then the columns on the right are more cash, more cash-based monies that are coming in from auxiliary fund sales or food service sales. These, these fluctuate based on cash transactions, monies coming in and going out at the state or at the district. And the next page is the cover page, so it's actually the first page of the document, but I, I typically try to end with this so that you can just do, see a quick snapshot as to what we have to post on our website. So on the bottom right corner, every year, we do have to, by statute, report on our, on our website, the average teacher salary for the current year and the year previous. And so that shows the community as to how we are paying teachers and any increases that may occur from one year to the other. You'll notice in the middle on the right-hand side, too, these are proposed levy rates for taxes, current and the future levy rate for fiscal year twenty-three. That may change a little bit, again, being a preliminary budget at this moment. We think we're pretty close. There's still some unknowns as to when the state does finally adopt a budget, making sure the timing of that gets to the county in a sufficient time, hopefully, that they have not already printed tax sheets to go out, or tax bills to go out to the public. So we, we will see. There's just some unknowns now, and we hope the legislature that they act fairly quickly so that we can get that to the county in a timely manner. The final page of the presentation is the district website snapshot of that, so you can find this information at lhusd.org, and you can see where to point and click and where to finally access this document and other annual financial reports and other budget from, like I said, both past and present. Any questions?
Discussion.
Oh, I, sorry, I did have one question. On, it's page six of our handout. I just want to make sure I understand something correctly. It talks about federal projects, and then it looks like for this budget, for this fiscal year, we have about ten million and some change from other federal projects. Are the other federal projects what are listed out here on the side, on this side?
No, that, that is different. So these on the other, this is, on the right-hand side, are more of our local control funds. The federal projects would be monies given to us like ESER, for example. So you, you do see a reduction between this current fiscal year and the proposed for next year because we've already spent down quite a few ESER, quite a few dollars in the ESER fund. So that, that's why you do see a little bit of a decrease between last year and this year.
Okay. Okay.
But that's primarily ESER funds, Fund three thirty-six, three, three twenty-six, three thirty-six, and three forty-six.
Okay. Thank you.
Other discussion or a motion? So just, just making sure I understand, the motion is that we're proposing this to be approved at the next, at the next meeting. Kind of what exactly is the motion?
So you're, you're actually approving the proposed budget?
Okay.
And then come July fifth, you'll be approving, or you'll be acting on the adopted budget?
Okay.
So it is, there is a proposed action?
So we're, we're approving it to be enacted later on?
You're just approving the proposed budget because by statute, we have to propose a budget, have it in public view for at least ten days, and then when they come back on July fifth for the public hearing, if those who have questions, they can take advantage of the hearing to, to pose those questions. And then depending on the outcome of that, then the action item will be to act upon the adopted budget on July fifth.
I wanted to make that clear because I think sometimes with all these budget, you know, items coming through, this is the time for the public to really look it over with a fine comb if they want to and come back with questions. And I appreciate all of the accessibility for the budget. I love that you showed the arrows for folks where they want to go, but this is, this is complicated stuff, and I think it is, you know, I, I'm, I'm a numbers guy, so I, I get into it and I see where all these things are, and it's very interesting. But I do think that's, that's something that for those folks who are really wondering where the money is going, it's really a chance for us to shine and show how fiscally responsible we have been, so.
And if I can just, again, point out, the cover page does have my contact information. Page two also has the contact information of other district personnel as well as the board members. So that way, if there are questions between now and then, or at any time during the year, they have that contact information available to them, both email and phone number.
And we don't currently have a motion on the floor, do we?
No, we don't.
Okay. Then I will move that we accept six point four.
I'll second that.
Archana?
Yes.
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 John Mastin?
Yes.
Eric Kurhan?
Yes. Moving on to six point five, business services, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school meal prices.
Mr. President, governing board members, the district food authority has been providing free meals in, in the school year two thousand twenty-two to all students through the USDA Summer Food Service Program waivers. Currently, the waivers will expire on June thirtieth, and we will resume the National School Lunch Program on August eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and cha, and charge according to the application eligibility. Beginning in August, a proposed increase of fifteen cents would take place for all student lunches. USDA requires that there is equity in school lunch pricing, a provision that requires school districts to charge students for paid meals at a price that is on average equal to the difference between free meal reimbursement and the paid meal reimbursement. Schools that currently charge less for meal prices than the amount needed to create paid lunch equity are required to gradually increase prices over time until they meet the requirement or supplement their food service operating fund. until they meet the requirement or supplement their food service operating funds with non-federal funds to ensure equity. A historical look at prices for breakfast and lunch are as follows at the bottom of the presentation here, the action item.
Motion or discussion?
I'll move to approve six point five.
I regretfully second that.
One thing with discussion, I crunched some numbers. I really think, you know, even though it is an increase, it's a five point two or percent for the high school and a five point seven percent increase for the middle school for lunch. Over two years, I mean, I know we had pandemic and free lunch, but when you compare before, that's very reasonable in today's, you know, inflation. So I think it's something that I can, I can, you know, I can commend that it hasn't gone up more.
I agree. I'm just sad to see the, the complete, you know, the waiver program disappear. But I would encourage people to fill out the Free and Reduced Lunch Assistance Program, even if you don't think you would qualify, or maybe you haven't qualified in the past. You might qualify now. And also, it's very private. I mean, I think some people don't want to sign up for it because of maybe a stigma or something like that. But no one will know that your student or your family qualifies for that when they're in the lunch line or in any other environment. So I, I do hope that you would fill out the paperwork if this is something that would help your family.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Gary Corran?
Yes. Moving on, six point six, business services, resolutions fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Mr. President, governing board members, Resolutions twenty-two, twenty-three, oh-two through twenty-two, twenty-three, ten are necessary to continue our current practices through the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. The resolutions as submitted are maintenance resolutions. It would not affect any substantial change in our current operating procedures. And again, these are resolutions that come before the board annually.
Any discussion or motion?
I'll move to approve six point six.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
John Mastin?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Gary Corran?
Yes. Moving on, six point seven, business services, district standardized apparel annual renewal.
Mr. President, governing board members, on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, the district issued an invitation for bid for district standardized apparel. On June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the governing board approved an annual district standardized apparel contract with natural tees for the twenty-two school year, with the option of up to four annual renewals. This would be the first of four possible renewals of the contract. Updated apparel pricing for the twenty-three school year was obtained, and it was determined that reasonable increases were acceptable due to the increase in the cost of goods.
Motion or discussion?
I move that we approve six point seven as presented.
I second.
With the company that we're going with, we've done, gone with them in the past as well, and so we have good relations with them.
Correct. So currently, they responded to the IFB in two thousand twenty-one. And we've used them in years past. This is a five-year contract, but every year, we will come before you to just renew their annual renewals.
And we're, we're satisfied with them?
We are. That's correct. Actually, they, they came to us earlier in the year when they knew that the cost of goods was, was really out of control. And they, they asked if there was any way that they could adjust their pricing mid-year. And we explained the purpose of the contract and how, you know, we were, we were trying to be accommodating as much as possible, and they can see that we were really trying to make sure we were just really true to the contract. In this case, they, they just asked and they said, okay, well, we'll, we'll keep it as is for now, and we'll come back at you at the, at the end of the year. So they've been really, really good at trying to keep costs down. And even if you see in the proposals that they sent, the increases, I, I thought they were going to come back way higher than they were, and that we would actually go out for bid again. And they, they actually came back at a, I think, at a very reasonable and respectful rate.
I am going to highlight the thing that I think most families would care about, and that is the, just a regular standardized shirt is still five dollars.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Gary Corran?
Yes. Six point eight, business services, vouchers, student activity funds, and auxiliary funds.
Mr. President, governing board members, approval of vouchers for April and May two thousand twenty-two and student activity funds for April twenty-two, as well as auxiliary funds for April of twenty-two, are there as presented.
Motion or discussion?
I move that we accept six point nine as presented.
Six point eight.
Six point eight, sorry.
And I'll second.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Gary Corran?
Yes. Moving on to seven, informational, superintendent.
I would just like to share that summer school is in full swing. Lots of fun going on in those classrooms, and I know you will share about STEM as well. But I did get to visit some classrooms today, and it's always fun to see kindergarten was being dismissed at the same time that the sprinklers started to fly. So they were very excited about, maybe we should run through the sprinklers. Their parents were not excited about that, because they were getting in their cars. But it, it is a great thing to see our kids still learning over the summer and to have our incoming kindergarteners in there for boot camp, so they get a chance to really learn, like, what, where are all the places in the school? Where do I go? What does this look like before school actually starts?
I'll just share a little bit, too. And what I want to share more about is what's going on in the summer? What is everybody doing? Well, teachers, I know a lot of them are, are going and doing their professional development. I know that some of them were in a conference in Tucson. I know some of, they got to see the monsoon that we didn't get. We're just still getting teased out here. But, you know, there's professional development going on. We have, you know, all of our schools have summer school. This is a new thing this year. Is it correct? It was new last year. That's correct. There's a lot of programs going on. Dr. Stone mentioned the STEM one that we're doing at a Thunderbolt. Tristan got some great pictures today. We killed a lot of astronauts. So, so, so our kids could be in the program later. We wanted to kill them. But there's STEM programs, there's athletic programs, a lot of different things going on. And this is just something about this town. I really do feel we're bouncing back from COVID and providing our kids a lot of opportunities, and I think we're also looking to expand them. So just kudos to everybody who's doing that with their summers, because a lot of folks don't have to. They can do it and, you know, have their own summers, but they're, they're very committed in wanting to do that. Any other calls to the public?
No, but can I do one more?
Sorry.
Sorry, that's okay. So it's along the same lines, but the SMART program is wrapping up this week at the high school. If you are someone who will have an eighth grader this year, you might already be thinking about that for next June. It's for incoming ninth graders. It's, my own daughter is participating in it this year. It's just really helpful. It's for kids, you know, if you're really good at math, or if you struggle at math, or if you're somewhere in between, it's meant to help you level up no matter where you are on that continuum. And it's been just a really positive experience. Two of my kids have participated, and it was great for both of them. And I think I've heard nothing but positive feedback from other families as well.
Yeah, my, my daughters did as well. I can, can really, you know, kind of add to that. The thing that was the most helpful is it created or kind of eased the fear of moving into high school. They get to see it, and they're not as scared as the first day. They kind of know about the lockers. And somehow, kids don't use a lot of the lockers anymore. That's something different than when I was there. That was my home. But, you know, some, another thing that's very good. All right. Now calls to the public. Okay. Board suggestions for future agenda items? Press media clarifying questions?
I'd actually just have one question on school meals. I was wondering if there's any future plans of prices raising, because you're not quite at that through eighteen.
So, and I have food service reps here, too, but as it states in, in the law, I mean, you have to do it gradually over time. So we, we do consider that as to what, what would be considered gradual. And at this particular time, we felt that that, that fifteen cent increase was indeed fit and fit the term of gradual. But at some point, and paid-meal equity is something that we're, we're constantly looking at. And usually, we're here before the board and doing ten cent to fifteen cent increments historically. That's kind of what we've done. Not jumping to that, that amount right now in the near future, no. Go ahead, Ann.
And one thing from perspective, Colorado River High School, their breakfast price is up two seventy-five, and their lunch is four seventy-five, so.
All right. We'll move to item ten. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Gary Corran?
Yes, we're adjourned.